As many as we normally thought because we're more consistent with it.
Dr. Dennis, is it an average of about 50 a year or less?
Fifty to fifty-five.
Fifty to fifty-five would be the one, you know, to check on the rubric.
Mrs. Dennis has been trying to say something.
Sorry.
If we were to change some of the language to be more positive and if we were to revise it so we strongly recommend retention so your child feels successful in first grade, would that be something that you supported because you're right, we do need the parent buy-in. I think they depend on us though to help them understand where their child is. So if we were to make some changes like that but still have a rubric where we all looked at the same criteria to see if we're going to strongly recommend to the parents, would you be interested in something like that and keep the same information but just make some of those, some of those changes? I think it's a good thing overall and I think, I think we, we understand what you're saying about the parent's ultimate decision, but we can always bring our very strong recommendation to the parents and say, "We really need these skills to be confident in first grade and to really make the progress that they're expected to make in first grade."
I would be very much in favor of that. I, I think this is a great idea and I'm really hoping parents would take the recommendation. I, I just think we should allow them to make that decision because if they're not bought in, it's really not going to matter. So I, I would be very much in favor of that.
I don't think we meant to be negative with the language. We just had a goal to be.
Oh, it is what it is. We know that, but I'm just going to sugarcoat it for. It'd be amazing.
If you sugarcoat it, they don't get it if you're blunt.
That's, you know what? We talked about that. You're right.
How they do it and have them know that.
Serious.
It's hard.
So in our first grade, are we allowed being retained?
No. Yeah, exactly.
They think whether it's mandatory or parent choice. But you and I got an upgrade here. We were there where you weren't really offered a choice and you didn't want to go home when the choice was made either. But the communication is going to be the critical thing. As long as, as long as you're communicating with the parent, whether it's stronger recommended or, or you need to retain your child, that's going to be the key thing. And I think the rubric, you know, we'll learn a lot running through the pilot program, but first plan, it definitely gives us a good guideline to take away that kid.
I really, you know, in teaching, the standard that you start with your classroom at the beginning of the year is the expectations you're going to get the rest of the year. And so as a first grade teacher, being on this committee, I'm thinking, okay, the parents are going to come in, they're going to know the expectations, there's going to be that communication there. Wow, what am I going to see when they, you know, when they do come to my classroom? And I think if we set up that for the parents, if it is mandatory, this is what we expect, this is how we're going to do it, then when they get to my class, that communication is already there, the high expectations is already there, they already know what's coming. So I just feel like it's a domino effect. So I have that, that expectation from kindergarten and then I have it in my class, then second grade's going to have it. And so I guess for me, having that mandatory retention, it also opens communication between me and kindergarten because I know exactly what they're expecting and when they come into my classroom. So I guess that's where, that's where I feel like it's just going to be a domino effect.
I know they're going to work through this one, implement this, but just kind of curious, what if we get a first grader in here that doesn't meet the standard, comes from out of town, who would put him in kindergarten or will he be allowed to the first grade?
That's when we would do our chair system and do our interventions with them.
Have you even thought about talking to Holcomb since they have an open school policy to move their kid if they don't like the decision of this district, to move their child over to Holcomb and they're not first grade ready? Is there something that we can do parallel? Just curious about.
And see, but if we, even if we adopted this just as strongly recommended, at least within the district, like in October, January, if, if I approach a parent in January and say, "I'm seri-, you know, we've been working together, we know there's problems, they're not ready, I'm going to recommend retention," because you don't come to me and say, "Hey, I'm retaining your child." They can't just say, "Oh, well, we're going to go live in grandma's house and go to Buffalo Jones now because we want them to pass, we want them to go on." We're going to have the same decision throughout every Garden City School. And you know, you know, if there's 50 to 55 retentions a year, can Holcomb take them? No, probably not. You know, and most of our parents, at least in my building, they wouldn't even consider that. They love us.
I have no doubt about that.
They love us. I really think that the communication is going to make the mandatory piece of this a moot point. So, good job.
Dr. Ava, I have another question. I know we've kind of talked about retention because we've talked about, as a couple of more faculty members, the inconsistency that we've seen and that we've heard every day between the schools. And I know you've commented about the mandatory, the ultimate decision, whether it's with the parents or with the school district, but I can't remember your answer.
He's being swayed.
We've had a history in this district of probably the teacher working with the parent and it coming down to particularly in the upper grades of the teacher recommending and hopefully the parent supports the recommendation, but if they don't, we appeal it to the parent at those upper grades. I would say that's been our practice, okay? Exactly what the philosophy that you share. What I shared with this committee before they started was for me to mock, to, to support a mandatory retention program, we would have to have ongoing communications, set our expectations from the very beginning, constantly communicate with the parent throughout the school year to come up with competencies that were measurable, that we could share, that would be easily understood by the parent and go all the way through the process and try to bring the parent along so that there was no surprises for the student or the parent. I have no problem of supporting these teachers and the principal's recommendation because of the open communication that I believe that they will have and the consistency we will have in the district, which we did have before, we were just kind of here and there. So that is your question.
You know, legally speaking, whose decision is it?
Legally, it, legally, we determine placement. We can determine placement. We have not exercised that legal.
Right, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that we have not done that, that we.
And really, this is the only place that we're considering it. I would guess we would continue with the same practice unless, unless the governor's recommendation becomes law and then of course we will follow that law.
We're asking you to sleep on it.
And just one more thing too is, most parents, when you are open with them and you communicate with them, they are on your side. So when you're talking to them in October and November and you're like, "Okay, I'm kind of seeing a problem, are you seeing the same things?" They'll be like, "Yeah." You'll give them some things to work on at home and tell them the things that we've been working on. Then when you come back and you talk about that retention, they're, they're mostly on their, your side and they do know that their child needs an extra year, they need that extra help. So most of the time, they are on our side. It's just making sure that communication is very open.
But maybe something the school district does need to consider, I don't, do we have any way to track kids that are retained and say whether this was successful or not successful? What do you think? Well, I think you could see how passionate they are. They put that amount of passion into this work. So anyway, whatever comes out of this, it's going to be much better for the district, much better for our kids because we now have that consistency. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We're moving to the community schools.
We have Terry Leatherman with us to speak and also Sharon Quinn, a teacher at our high school. Lisa Knoll is here as well. And Terry has got a PowerPoint presentation for us talking about grades and schools and the program.
Thank you.
In general, as well as the program at our high school. And I would like to, to interject before we get started that we have seen some good things in this program. And one that I didn't know much about, Terry and I talked and wanted to know if I could support the program and I said, "You know, Terry, I really don't know much, don't know many specifics about the program." So I took it upon myself to educate myself about more of what was going on at the high school and some of the things that they were doing. And I think it's a worthwhile program and one that you could tell us a lot more about. So Terry?
If I master or a PowerPoint, I will, if not me. A little nervous, this may not be the PowerPoint that had all the fancy transitions and slides and all that and cool stuff that I worked on, but if not, I'll try to just be eloquent. Thank you very much for that and.
Appreciate it.
Oh, okay. And I also very much appreciate your paperless policy and I'm, I'm almost frightened to do this, but I brought packets of information on communities and schools. I hope you all don't mind me passing out to you. I, I hope I'm moving enough that you'll want to read a little bit more about our program. But I think, I think we're on the air. Thank you very much. And I'll, and I'll, I'm, I'm humbled to be here because I may, I may not be qualified to be in your first grade. I'm really, it's a wonderful opportunity and thank you very much. I'd like to spend a little time talking about communities and schools, which has been a part of your district. It's now in its second year. And what I'd like to do is I appreciate you introducing our, our staff in the audience and I introduced it at one point in the presentation, but it is our Communities and Schools Southwest Kansas Regional Manager is Lisa Knoll and our Site Coordinator who works each and every day at the high school and at the alternative school is Sharon Quinn. Communities and Schools, just very briefly, we live on a mission daily of surrounding students with a community of support that will empower them to succeed in school and also to succeed in life. What we are principally dealing with, I think, is one of the largest problems we have in this city, this state, this country, and that is students who choose to drop out of school. It's a, it's a massive problem because it's widespread, around 7,000 kids each and every day decide to drop out of school. It's a massive problem because it tends to impact the poor, it tends to impact minority populations, they tend to drop out twice as frequently as the, the rest of the population does. It has horrible consequences for that child. The employment opportunities for that child who drops out of school are minimal and fading. Their long-term career opportunities are, are very challenged. You have this challenging consequence that happens when a child drops out of school in that they have low employment opportunities, they tend to have low self-esteem, and they tend to have a whole lot of free time on their hands, which leads to some bad decisions. And as a result, this is also a huge problem for society. What we tend to find is that the, the dropout population will do little to contribute to our economy, they will do little to contribute to our overall workforce needs, especially tomorrow's more technological workplace. And they'll tend to be individuals who will use social services to a higher degree. And I guess the shocking fact that's always struck me is that one out of eight white men in America who drop out of high school end up in prison, one out of three black men who drop out of high school in America end up in prison. By the way, this is going, this will start to be a lecture if I, if I don't say off the bat here, I'd, I'd welcome any questions, comments that you all might have along the way. But anyway, that's the principal problem that we deal with every day and we look at the issue of why does a child drop out of school? And we know it's not just because they can't handle things academically, it's usually a social reason. Perhaps it's because that child is hungry, perhaps that child can't see the blackboard and that's why they can't learn. Perhaps they've had no one to help them with their homework, perhaps they've had no one to demonstrate how important they truly are. There's usually a whole lot of social reasons why a child chooses to drop out of school eventually. And that's why Communities and Schools turns to schools and says, "Can we help?" And what we do is establish a program that tries to deliver two forms of social service inside of that school. What Sharon's doing each and every day at Garden City High School is one of two services within the CIS model. First of all, we have what we call the Widely Assessable Prevention and Intervention Services. We call them whole school or Level One Services. And what we are doing there is working with the principal, the administration, and the teachers in a school building to identify school-wide problems. And once those problems are identified, solutions or ways to address those problems are developed and presented during the course of the school year. Thus, we're able to provide broad sweeping change to an entire student body. Secondly, what we try to do is targeted and sustained individual interventions for children who are identified as showing all the tendencies of dropping out of school. Either they have poor attendance, poor behavior, poor academic performance, they're identified and they're enrolled in case management. And in case management, they work with that site coordinator to develop an individual plan to address their needs and that site coordinator works with them throughout the school year to try to address their individual problems. So that's basically the CIS approach to, to working inside a school building. Try to do something for the entire student population with whole school services and try to address those students that are most challenged in the school building. This is just a little model that shows you kind of how visually we work. That site coordinator kind of works to bring all these community resources inside that school building so that they can benefit the students in need. As I mentioned, we have been a part of your high school since August of 2011 when we were able to open up our program at the high school. We're now in our second year there. I already mentioned to you that Lisa and Sharon are our staff here. We also have an AmeriCorps intern, AmeriCorps volunteer, if you will, who works inside the high school, Alexis Richardson, who is someone who was in the high school a year ago, right, Sharon?
Yeah.
Very good. So she's just literally very new on our staff and helping out in the work that we're doing inside the building. This year, the Level One or Whole School Programs that we've had have, we've had 1,900 students benefit by programs that we've had in the school during the course of this school year. Some of those Level One Programs include addressing the basic needs of students. Sharon maintains a closet at the high school where if a, a basic need needs to be met, she can reach in it and try to provide it for that student. Where we're either trying to address hunger issues, trying to address clothing issues, trying to address school supply issues. We have had a successful program called Savior Grades, which is a tutoring program that's been done to, especially around finals time if I'm not mistaken, right, Sharon?
Yeah, close.
We've had a, a career training, also college training program called Charting for Success that's been offered inside the school. Freshmen this year are all participating in a program called Reality You, which is a financial literacy program that we take around where we, for one day, simulate, the kids are 26 years old and they have to make buying decisions based on the curriculum that's laid out that day. Also, there's a lot of partnerships going on inside the school with other community resources to try to work out ways to help benefit students in the school. In addition to the Level One Programs, Level Two Programs are taking place in the high school. There were, our goal is to have 105 students enrolled this year in case management. We're in the 90s right now. Pleased to report that during the course of the year, six students have obtained their high school graduation this school year. The important thing that I, I'd look forward to sharing with you all later is that we measure the performance of students during the course of the year in case management and at the end of the year, we'll be assessing students on how well they did in our, our case management curriculum in terms of, did they improve their, did they stay in school? Did they get promoted to the next grade? If they were seniors, did they graduate on time? In terms of, we'll, we'll measure the ones who are enrolled for academic improvement to see how well they did, so on and so forth. So we try very hard at the end of the year to give some measures of the performance done in the school. I did want to mention to you that this program has been unique for communities and schools of Kansas because it's really been entirely funded by, by private sources. The program was made possible its first year principally because AT&T came forward first and wanted to do a program in this community and turned to us. Along with a major support from the Fennep Foundation and then also Black Hills Energy, we were able to fund the program for the first year. The second year, we've been able to grow the number of supporters to the program and we are actively reaching out to businesses and to philanthropies in the community to fund the program towards the third year, starting in August. Just want to give you a moment on, on communities and schools in the state of Kansas. We have a program that began in 1990 in Wichita. Wichita is by far our largest program. We're in 19 different schools in Wichita and the general area. We also have freestanding programs in Ulysses have for a number of years, also in Ottawa. And our state organization has formed then two regional CIS affiliates. We have CIS of Northeast Kansas, which has programs in Topeka, one program in Lawrence and also in Kansas City. And we then started our CIS of Southwest Kansas and right now, the one program is the one at Garden City High School. Just a little bit on, on our statewide performance, yes sir?
What about Ulysses? Ulysses isn't a part of that?
No, they, they're, they're a freestanding organization, they have their own 501(c)(3). Those three, they've been around for a few years longer than we started this umbrella of the limited process, but we provide a lot of resources to Sarah Nagel who runs that program up in Ulysses. When you add up all those programs, we're in around, we have site coordinators in 35 schools, I believe, right now in Kansas. Last year, we served about 23,000 students. What you see there in the bottom is the results of our case management across the state. There were around 2,000 kids who were enrolled in case management. 99% of them stayed in school, 98% of them were promoted to the next grade, 79% showed improvement in behavior, 80% showed improvement in academics, 81%, I'm sorry, 81% in academics, 80% in attendance, and 73% of the graduates who were eligible to graduate, did graduate on time. This is a little bit really on our national organization, I'm not going to spend much time on that, but we are a part of Communities and Schools nationally. We're in around 25 states and the District of Columbia. The fifth largest youth-serving organization in America and the one you've never heard of. The, the top four are folks like Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Boys Club, and we're right behind them. We have programs and then there's a little bit here statistically on what we do. I think you'll find it similar to the state of Kansas results. I do want to spend just a moment to talk about this slide because we are an organization that feels like we do very strategically our work in school buildings. We feel like we are, are proven. We've had our program evaluated by a third-party evaluator who found that we were uniquely effective at not just helping kids stay in school, but helping them perform better in school, that we're a cost-effective program. We price out at below $200, $200 per student that we provide services to. We are a scalable program in that our evaluation has demonstrated that we're a program that can be effective at the high school level, but also at the middle school and the grade school level. In fact, we have some hybrid programs right now at the community college level where we're providing support for students who have graduated from high school so that they can survive their first year of college. We also focus our work on the neediest of students. Nearly 90% of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch in our program nationally and 80% plus are racial minorities. And then finally, I'd just like to close with what we call the five basics at Communities and Schools. These were brought to us by our founder, a gentleman named Bill Milliken when he founded the program in 1977. They are five things he feels like every child needs. And curiously enough, these five basics are things that our site coordinators like Sharon provide each and every day in the schools. That each and every child needs to have a one-on-one relationship with a caring adult. So we do a lot of mentoring programs in the schools. That every child needs a safe place to grow and learn, especially at the elementary level, a lot of after-school programmings and a lot of places where a kid can feel safe and can enjoy being a kid a little bit. That every kid needs a healthy start and a healthy future. Like I said earlier, it's pretty hard to study when you can't see the blackboard or your, or your teeth are aching because you've never been to a dentist. So we do a lot of preventive health type partnerships. That every kid needs a marketable skill to use upon graduation. We do a lot of vocational, educational type opportunities. And then finally, that every child needs a place to give back to peers and communities. We try to do as much as we can and service learning concepts so the kids can learn to give back also. We are very excited to have been in this program, in this community now a year and a half, knocking on two years. We feel like we're getting better each and every day. We thank you for the opportunity to serve with you, the kids of your community, and we very much look forward to continuing and hopefully growing this partnership. This did turn into a lecture. I apologize for that, but I want to thank you all very much for the opportunity to tell you a little bit about our program. We'd welcome any opportunity where we can come back and visit with us more about what we're doing at the high school and the Alternative Education Center and how we might be able to serve you more. And if I or either Lisa or Sharon could answer any questions you'd have, we'd be happy to.
You, May, and Sharon, Lisa, I don't know, maybe this is more directed toward you all, but as your fundraising is more and more successful, you're opting to expand it to the middle schools area.
I have to tell you about that. That would be my goal. Yeah.
When we started, actually, the initial conversation we had with Dr. Ava, that was, that was, some of our really hope, the desire of AT&T was to do something at the high school level. So suddenly, we became big fans of the high school level. But I, we feel like as much as possible, if you could have a continuum of service so that a kid can move on to the high school and have experience with us at the middle school. And we have experienced them, so we, we find that can be very successful and we can work a feeder pattern.
And we can actually be a K through 12 program. So it would make sense with AmeriCorps and especially that third grade point that we would grow to a K through 12 program as we can stabilize that funding. Because that AT&T grant was huge that first year and that has dwindled. So we've been able to stabilize that funding this year to provide Sharon's position and now it's, how do we grow this so we can expand it in Garden City?
The 25 students who were referred by the parental consent form was not signed. Are those situations where the parent, maybe there was a language barrier, so the parents didn't know to sign it, or did they specifically decide out of the program? Can you explain a little bit more about those 25 students?
I might for Sharon. I, I'll do progress with, in fact, I'm going to as much as possible refer it to Sharon. I think we're all a little better for them. But I will say just, you know, globally, that that's, that's a significant challenge to, obviously, we want to have parental involvement and important inclusion in what we're doing, but to secure that parental approval is a challenge. And now I'll let Sharon maybe amplify on that a little bit.
Right. Once I get a student referred, I have to gain that parent consent. And sometimes that can be a challenge and take some time and it's waiting, there's 25 pending, you know, which numbers change all the time and that, because then I'll get them kicked through and then we'll get some new ones going. So it's a constant just in the waiting to come on caseload until I get the acquired parent consent part. So we try to do, we try to meet with the parents, you know, at home. So, we try to do, we try to meet with the parents, you know, home, school, set the meeting time, and sometimes that's not always easy, contact as far as phone numbers. We may allow a little informational and follow-up. So, sometimes I can take a while, sometimes it may never happen. Sometimes parents still don't, they don't want their child to.
How many do you think have just flat-out said, "We're not going to participate"?
Really, not many, not many. I've had a few, and those have been those cases where, you know, the parent would be like, "Well, my child's receiving a lot of other services already," but then, you know, they don't need additional.
Do kids refer from a counselor?
It's a variety, counselors, teachers. At the Alternative Education Center, a lot of times it's students themselves that are being called for traditional things, but over there, it's generally students with a self-report.
What do you think of the 105, go?
It's the first, 75% of our, Terry would have to answer that, I think.
Yeah, we, and you all have a great tweener, because you're at the 2,000 mark. It's like, it's like 10% of under 1,000, 5% of over 1,000, so basically, a deep down 5% of the student population.
I feel very blessed that you're in our community and helping our students in our district. I think this is amazing. You know, any help that our students can get is going to help them out in their future, so I thank you. I also thank the sponsors that stepped up this year to kind of fill that void from what AT&amp;T, they did a great job getting it going, but it's so nice to see those, a whole list of community supporters jump on the bandwagon, and so that's very impressive as well.
Thank you, and that's bringing Lisa on board, too.
She's good, so we have some individual businesses that stepped up this year that weren't even listed up here, and that really came on board at, you know, 15-minute meeting, and they were like, "Yes," because they understand the impact of high school dropout on our community, and they're like, "Yes."
Our community is so supportive of our educational system. It's, we're so proud to be here.
And I will say, Mark was it you that asked about referrals?
Sure.
Sharon's kind of in a unique situation at the Alternative Education Center, because if the kids come in at 8:00 in the morning, Sharon waits down there until 8:30. I've been down there, and she's waiting by the front door to let them in, and if they're late, she has the relationship with them that she can say, "Hey, what's going on? How come they're not here?" I mean, she can converse with them and help them come up with ideas, rather than being the teacher or the principal or that, and that's where a lot of those referrals are coming from. They had, one of the stories, she told me in her office one day, was they had a kid that went down in the hallway and had to call the ambulance to come and get him, and she was the one staff person there that was able, that was free, that could sit there with the kid and hold his hand and talk to him, and give him a drink of water, until the ambulance got there. And so, I mean, when you do that with a kid, they're going to be in your office the next time there is a crisis, and so.
Your number one basic is so important that it's listed there, and she's able to offer that.
And they don't see her as a teacher or an authority figure, so it's.
We have found that we've become ingrained, when we've become ingrained in the fabric, there's marvelous things happen. I'd say, you know, and I don't think Sharon will yell at me afterwards, we're saying this, the first year, she's kind of standing up, "Notice me over here," and because there's so much going on, we're a brand-new program, it really does take a little bit of time, but I think, you know, very much Sharon's now a part of both buildings and able to do more. In fact, teachers are turning to her. We expect so much out of teachers, you know, you expect them to be nutritionists and psychologists, and also teach a little math and science. When they have another resource they can turn to and say, "Jimmy or Jane has a problem, can you help them out with this or that?" That's where I think we can do a lot of good for you all. And toward the question earlier of being in your middle school, I think we're looking to more and more diversify that funding stream. We talked a little to the state of Kansas about the idea of trying to identify different funding sources so that we're not, and in the case in this community, not dominate just in the business community, but trying to identify as many funding sources as we can so that perhaps as we have successes here, there are more successes in the middle schools and perhaps elementary schools also.
Well, I think that indispensability, I guess, Sharon, to a certain extent, we're recognized, because I know, we've heard about it at the Board Faculty Meeting at the Alternative Center, and they really appreciate, it sounds like, the program and what's going on.
Thank you. We're, we don't want to be a quiet success. We'll try to be louder and hopefully have a lot of successes, and really, we welcome being a resource to this board. If we can provide you with any information or respond to any questions, we welcome the opportunity.
Well, this is a great program, and I'd really like to see it expand, you know, because from what we've heard, children, students make a decision when they're about in fifth grade whether they think they're going to be academically successful in school, and to have support at more at that level would be wonderful, because maybe we wouldn't need it so much at the higher grades. So, I commend you, and thank you for working so much. I hope we are able to continue to get funding and move that program into the higher grades as well.
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity to visit.
Now, it looks like we have program budgeting.
As you're all aware, we had our budget work group meeting last Tuesday, and I want to thank all of you for being there at the meeting. We had 15 different program areas that presented, they all presented a 100% and 98% proposal. At the end of the meeting, we had 30 school voting members prioritize all of those program areas as to if we had to make cuts, which we would cut first, second, et cetera. The 30 court members are all of the program chairs, and then we had certified staff, classified staff, and we had, I think we had 11 parent community members present. After the prioritization was tallied, we're making a recommendation to you this evening that three of the program areas be funded at 100%, and that would be elementary, education, middle school, and health services. All the other programs at this point in time, we're recommending be funded at 98%. You know, if we find that more funds, if we have more revenue sources available than what we think we will at this point in time, then we can move further down the list, so high school instruction would be the next one that would be funded at 100% if we have the funds available. The overall cuts that we're recommending at this point in time equals a little over $800,000, or that's about 1.4% of the, all the program areas that were presented. On your, on the table, I gave you kind of a summary. We did a survey of all the people that were present at the meeting, and so you have a tabulation of survey results. It looks like the group, the group that was at the meeting last week, they highly recommend continuing this program on a yearly basis. Overall, the survey results were positively effective. At this point in time, I'd open it up to discussion, if you have any questions, concerns. The board has the ultimate decision as to how we fund everything in the program budgeting process, so I'll open it up for discussion at this time.
Catherine, we talked, we have a total number of potentially 24 positions being lost. How many based off of this?
Based on the recommendation that you had there, I think it's 17 and a half positions would be cut.
And those include teachers?
Yes. There. Would be one high school teacher, two specialized teachers, perhaps a captain, and half-cancer.
Four bus drivers.
Four bus drivers, two custodians, a painter, two bilingual repair professionals, one library care, which is really two half-time positions, and an assistant principal. Three special ed professors also.
The reason why I ask is because, you know, Dr. Aiden said at the end of that, that we're no longer knocking on the classroom door, we're in the classroom door, and I just wanted to emphasize how much.
We are. However, you'll notice the top, I think the top two programs that will be funded at 100% are elementary and middle school education. So, if those would have been funded at 98%, we would have been into the classroom a lot more than we are. So, I think the group as a whole, when they did the prioritization, and this is not untypical, this is kind of typical of what prior years have been, elementary, middle school, and high school instruction are the areas that may get higher priority, because we all know the teacher in the classroom is probably, the teacher that's directly in the classroom is probably has the most effect on the students, so we want to make sure we have those teachers in the classroom.
It's sure tough to see, to, the country schools take a cut of the library, although there's so short a staff anyway, so there are options for the other issues, kids are just, for the reduced, it's a tough one.
The whole process was painful to hear. I mean, it was several hours long, I think we got over 9:00 that night. It was gut-wrenching, and the fact that it looks like, like Mark put a spotlight on how many people this teachers, and it's going to touch, is just incredibly sad. I just, I encourage anyone who's watching right now, please write a letter to your legislature, any of your representatives. This is, this is affecting the future of our country, and this is very sad.
You know, I've got a question on health services. It's just something that you've probably looked at already, but routinely, with a lot of therapy and things that are provided, we build Medicaid or Medicare, but anyway, we do, we have sources of outside funding for some of those services, and I'm just wondering whether we've looked at all of the potential for services provided and funds made available potentially for things like what the nurses do for certain services that's billable, if that's the right term. And so, maybe you guys have already looked at that.
We, we're eligible for Medicaid services for direct billing and also administrative services, and so we do identify those students. Actually, Karen just filled out a form last week on that. We identify those students that do receive direct Medicaid services, and so we are doing everything we can to get those funds.
Can we do it on health services?
The health services.
It has to be locked, and it's very limited. It has to be in 15-minute increments, and most of the procedures that the nurses provide are, you know, three to four minutes. So, we've looked at that to see if it would be worthwhile, what we have to do, it's changing right now, but we have to get parent permission annually, and then that goes to the doctors, and they have to sign and send back, any students Medicaid eligible, and that changes continually. It might be eligible one month and not the next. It'll be billed for OT, operational therapy, physical therapy, and speech-language pathology services. And for like our speech services, we also have speech paras, we do usually about half the services. We can only bill when the speech cap does not appear as a service. So, there are lots of rules that we have to follow.
And we're doing, we're doing that work, and that was the only question is, from the standpoint of what the nurses do, is there something we're missing there that we've already sort of got a framework and an habit and paperwork set up?
We looked into it and calculated whether we could, at one point, we were up about $290,000 with Medicaid, and that's when we could have, how we could build one-on-one para services, and that was taken away a couple of years ago. So, that really dramatically cut what we can do. We consider it soft money because it is reimbursed.
I know. We try to access that money as much as possible. We don't, I don't budget for that revenue because it is pretty soft money, and we don't know how much we're going to get or when we're going to get it, so, but we do have that.
There's a lot of paperwork involved.
Mark, 10 years ago, that was a pretty good funding stream, but did the federal government really tighten it up, where the documentation is so tight, it's hard to do. But as Catherine would say, you don't have a budget for it because you may not get it, so. You bring up a very good example.
I just got a question regarding the SED department and the free paras. Since so much of what is accomplished in SED is federally mandated, and we don't have a choice, is the loss of free paras going to impact our ability to meet those requirements?
That's a very important question to answer. Yes, it's going to impact what we do with the teachers and the pre-paras. Part of the difficulty is I'll have a couple of students age out, I have one-on-ones, but I have a lot of little ones coming up that are going from half-day program to a full-day program that I have to, you know, increase, so it may be that I'm pulling from other places to do that, to make, have those one-on-ones in particular. There's always the potential at early childhood that we reduce to, you know, right now, we have two classroom paras, we may have to consider not, and I think that will have an impact on parent readiness, without a doubt. You talked about the curriculum earlier tonight about it's pretty tough, and we've got kids already coming in, a year, two years behind, and as a three-year-old, getting it, cutting down the number of permanent staff there to help support that, it's going to be an impact, without a doubt.
But it's really a concern, because what Gloria was talking about, too, and our funding cuts, on one hand, we're being mandated by the same entities that are cutting our funding to do what they're mandating us to do, and it puts us in a very difficult position. I think that, you know, continuing to contact the legislatures and the federal legislators would be good to make sure that they are aware of what the impact is on their decisions and on their mandates. They can ask us to do any number of things, but not providing any funding for those things really ties that in.
Government actually provides about 16% of our budget in special education. That's actually what becomes the outcomes, and which is mandated, so that's a perfect example of how deep it comes in, you have to get that money from somewhere else. It's ridiculous.
Well, there's somewhere else used to be the state, and the state's not, so we're not doing that either, and it's really hurting our children, it's hurting our future.
Most of the cuts for the program budgeting, it's funding, these expenditures come from funding at the state and primarily state and local level. Anything funded, primarily anything funded at the federal level is outside of this process. And I don't want to sound like doom and gloom, but like kind of our, most of our federal money is our title programs, Title I, migrant, and we're anticipating a 5% reduction in those funds next year also. So, we'll have some additional cuts due to the title program.
And you're basing this budget on what base data for people, same as last year?
The same as last year.
And with no increase in LOB?
Minor, little or no increase in the LOB. We may have to increase the LOB a little bit. I don't have the results of our audit, we just got audited on our student enrollment for last fall, this last month, and we haven't had the exit interview on that, but I'm anticipating...